Welcome, everyone, to the July 18th City Council Public Hearing. This evening, we are going to be talking about having a public hearing on an ordinance concerning imposition of a 3% tax on the retail sale of recreational marijuana. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Now you're on. All right.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing on a 3% tax on the retail sale of marijuana. If council approves the ordinance, then the proposed tax will appear on the November 2016 ballot, and action is scheduled for July 25th.
Thank you, Mayor. Open the public hearing. We have one person signed up for it. I think you know that you have three minutes to speak. Please come up, Emily Semple.
Good evening, Council. I'm Emily Semple, Ward 1. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but Councilor Zelenka asked me to. I was under the impression, I think I read it in the RG, that council already talked about this. When the state started the tax, there was an opportunity for cities to decide yea or nay. So I was a little surprised that, you know, it's come up for review again. But my biggest issue is that we've had five days for a public hearing, and there's been no notices of it. And so there's no public to talk about this. Why have a public hearing except you have to? So I'm being the public and talking to you to say, I don't think this is a good idea, but I know you're going to put it on the ballot, and we'll get to talk about it later. So, thank you.
You. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask if there are any questions or comments from City Council. Councilor Saret.
Glenn, when did the public notice go out of our public hearing?
Ten working days ago, so it would have been about 15 days ago. So probably a little over two weeks, there would have been notice in the register guard. The ordinance would have been posted on the website at about the same time.
Yeah, so I appreciate, excuse me, the short turnaround time between our discussion at a work session and this public hearing. It was short, but staff, understanding that we had the work session scheduled, actually noticed the public hearing within the required legal time in case we referred it to tonight's public hearing. So we did kind of have a backup plan. And then it was also announced in at least the register guard twice in terms of an article. And I think the consideration before the ballot measure was a different set of considerations, whether we wanted to try and preclude even allowing legalized recreational marijuana in the city and other considerations. And I think until the state voters decided whether or not they wanted to even consider the idea, we decided not to take any action on it. So it's a little bit of a different dynamic than now that the measure passed and the OLCC has created this framework. Now cities around the state are taking up the question of whether or not to add that 3% local tax. So, thanks for your public comment.
And there was a "not" there today, I think. I mean, the editorial.
Yes, that's right.
Right. Okay, I'm going to now adjourn the meeting.
Is another here?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment.
Sure.
I will not be supporting this. I'll be voting against it. I think it's a really terrible idea to pick one item, one product, out of the many thousands of products that are sold at retail in town here. It sets a really bad precedent. Maybe, I think the thinking might be, well gee, I don't smoke pot, so let the people that smoke it pay the tax. Well, you could apply that to a lot of different things. Gee, I don't like miso. Let's tax miso. Tax miso 3% so the people that like miso can, you know, they'll have to pay for it. We'll add that. Then we'll add, you know, of course, alcohol. If we did that, there'd probably be a revolt, an armed revolt, if we tried to tax that booze at retail. I know, let's tax vehicles that cost more than $30,000, whether they're new or used. Let's add a 3% tax to that. Because, you know, the vehicle I drive is a lot cheaper than that, so I wouldn't have to pay that tax, but other people would. I, you know, it's just kind of opening up the box here for many other little add-ons. And I think, I don't quite understand the reasoning, but I think there's perhaps in the back of people's minds, well marijuana, you know, it's kind of like a sin tax. It's bad, it's evil, let's tax it. I do understand that, and I won't be able to support it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Councilor Evans or Councilor Clark, you have anything you want to say?
No, Mayor, I have nothing to add.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to now adjourn.
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Clark. I am now going to adjourn the meeting of the Eugene City Council and convene a meeting of the Urban Renewal District Renewal Agency.
Mayor.
And I think we have to...
We haven't voted yet.
What?
We didn't vote on the...
No, we're not...
We're not voting tonight.
We're not taking action.
Not tonight.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Mayor, before you go into the executive session for the Urban Renewal Agency, just to point out for the public's benefit, that after your executive session for the Urban Renewal Agency, you'll adjourn that meeting, reopen the meeting of the City Council, go into an executive session there, and then the plan is to come out of the executive session and have a public conversation about City Hall again, or to continue your work session from earlier.
Thank you for that, Glenn. So the Urban Renewal Agency will now meet in executive session held pursuant to ORS 1926602E to discuss a negotiation of real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff will be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. Councilors, if you could hang up, I'm going to try to connect you the other way.
Because anybody can cure it.
I'm going to call the line.
What was that? The dome silence.
This gets smart.
You all let me know when everything is right, right, Bill?
That's what we need in these things.
Number one, John, with, and this bears on the city hall decisions, but six point six to six point nine, is that money that is currently in some manner of reserve, urban renewal fund in some way, versus without E-WIB, or is that general, should be funded if we use those purchases, urban renewal dollars?
I don't know if they're necessarily appropriate at the moment, but they would be urban renewal dollars that we would have to ask council to approve.
So would essentially borrowing that, or is it a threat on things like that?
We believe we have asked by the, the grid of funds, urban renewal agency, it's just not appropriate, so we would, um, make sure that it's there.
Okay. I guess, I, uh, you know, I would, I think there's, like, there are.
So, uh, there would be two components to getting to a ten point one million dollar deal. Um, one component would be what PHP did on the second quarter, the first quarter. Um, the biggest, hopefully the catch on, is the application, the government, the government. Fundraising for the, uh, fundraising, fundraising, about a half million. We applied for a community grant, about two million dollars, either the board yet, or maybe, and then, interestingly, now this is offered, so I can basically do my, um, such a, I'd love to identify some existing budget preparations that we could get, project, about, um, one that we're telling, have the, now, so we, budget, do the records, um, and then some public works done, about four hundred thousand, that was, to, to, and then the central service, that's a couple, with, I think, three hundred thousand, but it's safe, that, that we're, like, sure, that, that, so, those existing budget preparations, that we can, like, check.
Yeah, I would guess, I, I think, you know, the, the, I think, you have the, the call, the, the, yeah, I would say, 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 yeah,[1736.11]